I'm gonna call this meeting to order the City Council. It being May eleventh, twenty twenty-one, being six P. uh, six P. M. Will everyone be, uh, please stand for the invocation. Our invocation is gonna be, uh, it's gonna be brought to you by Pastor Jackie Protes from Casa de la Fada in Texas.
Let us pray. Father God, we wanna thank you for this day. For everything that you've given us, Lord. For the very breath that we breathe. For our heart being, Lord. For every single thing that we can do. Father, I ask that you are in this place. For all know you wanna make a change in our city. Holy Spirit, help us to do that. We thank you, we praise you, we wanna glorify you. We want our city to be back on your foundation, on your plans, Lord. That our plans line up with your plans. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. Please remain standing for their pledges. We brought you by a council member of Mark Mata.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, indivisible and eternal. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Everybody go ahead and see.
So we have quite a bit of celebrating duty tonight. First, we are going, we are gonna be celebrating quite a few young people. Uh, this is gonna be Texas Scholars Day. So I'm gonna ask the young people to come up. These are Madeline V. Barara, Chloe Ocosca, Kelly Sharp, Naomi Alvarez, Derek Corales, De La Bascas, Sergio Bravo, Justin Pineda de Zonzondo, April Wright, Desiree Sanchez. Yacovin, come on, come on up. I'm sorry. Come on up. Sapania Adalia, Adali, Tala, Kelly Sanchez, Leila Serano, Sean Ronan Sanchez, Nivek Esabian. So these, this group right here all represent UTEC Odessa, Odessa High School and also permanent. Our Odessa Collegiate Academy is Alexander Adadis, Jerry Houghton, Kate Lederma, Brisa Mutalvo. Are y'all here? Come on up. Trudy Orsby, Cassandra Tarango, Jose Guerra. These are all the Odessa Collegiate Academy. Also, come out will be the OC Tex, Don Sullivan, Marlene Jimenez, Jennifer Lopez Martinez, Iris Jimenez. And from Compliment Academy, Mark Coulson, Carreras, Lacy Stetterwhite, Allison Dunlop. Are you here? So we're gonna be able to present a proclamation. So who's gonna, who's gonna take it? Okay, well, I'll just, I'll take someone. So the City of Odessa proclaims, whereas the Texas Scholars Program is designed to encourage students to pursue a higher level of course study to be qualified when entering the workforce. And whereas the Echo County and Pinewood School District participates in this workforce development program which helps students understand that good, well-paid jobs are awarded to those who have prepared themselves by obtaining a sound academic education. And whereas the students in the program volunteer for local nonprofit religious charitable organizations. And whereas voluntary development teamwork, communication skills, bills, networking opportunities provide sense of achievement. Whereas the City of Odessa Chamber of Commerce, ECSD, Business Organization, sponsors Texas Scholars for our leaders from tomorrow. And whereas this academic year, two hundred and fifty-five students enrolled in Texas Scholars and completed six thousand eight hundred and thirty-three volunteer hours. Since the inception of the program in nineteen ninety-seven, there had been three hundred and eleven thousand two hundred and nine volunteer hours contributed to the community. Now therefore, I have it hold by the virtue of thirty vested in me as Mayor of the City of Odessa, Texas, due here by co-main, proclaiming May eleventh, twenty twenty-one, as Texas Scholars Day. Give these kids a round of applause. So I encourage all the citizens to acknowledge these commending students and their strong foundation encouraged by Texas Scholar Program to compete in tomorrow's competitive workforce. Kids, congratulations. Thank you for the good work. And thank you for everything you've done in this community. And we will bless you and give you good luck in your future. Thank you very much. Oh, did we miss one? Why didn't you come up? No, 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 I didn't get your name? Okay, I'm sorry, what's your name? Okay, there's, we have one other Texas Scholars. I had an answer come up. Also, real quickly, if the parents are here, can you stand up? Can the parents stand up? Guys, just give the parents a round of applause. Thank you for being here and grandpa and grandma. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for everything you've done and supporting these kids. Trust me, I'm a parent and a grandparent in what it takes. Thank you very much. Salam. Is someone here for the, uh, problem alergia? That's how I said. Is, uh, Ben here? Ben Dabowski? Is Michelle Dabowski in, uh, in the chambers or in the lobby? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and make this presentation. Uh, City of Odessa proclamation, whereas problem alergia is a chronic pain illness that affects over ten million people in this state. Primary illness and millions more secondary illness. Problem alergia is also a condition affecting the central nervous system for which there is currently no cure. Causes fatigue, debilitating pain in women, men, and children of all ethnicities, many of which go undiagnosed. Whereas increased awareness, expanding knowledge of the realities of living with problem alergia is also an impact on patients' quality of life will allow the community at large to better support those who struggle with challenges of this chronic pain illness. And where there's the National Problem Algaligent Chronic Pain Associations, leaders against pain codices and other support groups have joined together to advocate problem alergia awareness support and better future research, diagnosis, education, treatment. Now therefore, I have it hold by virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Odessa, Texas, due here proclaiming May twelfth, twenty twenty-one, as problem alergia awareness day. And so the City of Odessa, we urge all citizens to support search of problem alergia cure to assist families who deal with this devastating disease. So we'll make this presentation to the organization. Okay, so we're gonna have a little fun here. So members of the, that's how, stand up and come forward? You are the president? All right. So you missed the meeting just like I did. So City of Odessa proclaims, whereas motorcycles are increasingly popular means of transportation by community tour and recreation use in our roads. And whereas motorcycles are virtually unprotected, therefore more prone to injury or death in a crash than other vehicles and drivers. And whereas critical elements reduce injury fatalities in motorcycle as an education about motorcycle safety. And where it is the responsibility of all, put themselves behind the wheel to become more aware of motorcycles, regarding them with the same respect than the other vehicle traveling on highways of this country. It is the responsibility of riders, motorists elect to obey all traffic laws and safety rules. And whereas I urge all citizens of our community to become aware of the inherent danger involved in operating a motorcycle. For the riders, motorists, to give each other mutual respect they deserve. Now therefore, I have it hold by the virtue of the authority vested in me that City of Odessa, Texas, due here proclaiming the month of May as motorcycle safety wins month. So that City of Odessa urge also to do their part to increase safety awareness in our community in order to save our lives. Thank you very much. Good afternoon. On behalf of the founder club here in Odessa, Texas, of the E M C, we wanna say thank you for having us here. And as we all know, it is, uh, the month of May, by word of month. So, uh, just the word we wanna spread is that it gets pretty crazy out, especially with the oil field coming up and a lot of traffic. You know, all we ask is just help us spread the word, just to be alert, to, uh, you know, get the big picture always, you know, aim high, see what's ahead, and, uh, use the warning devices ourselves and yourselves, you know, where we can have a safe trip and go home safe to our family. That's all I got. Thank you. So we have a special recognition for EMS week. So we have Ben Sawyer, Robert Rivera, Joey White, Sal Aldega. Can you come up? John, uh, Chief John Alvarez, Stephen M. Hattis, Brian L. White, Stephen Delion, Christian Beltran, and Corey Street. The City of Odessa does proclaim, whereas emergency medical services are vital public service in Texas. And whereas emergency medical service teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas emergency medical service personnel, Odessa Fire Rescue, are highly trained individuals to provide immediate emergency care to injured or ill persons. Whereas these emergency services are often second decisions ultimately determine life or death situations. Whereas the access to, uh, quality emergency care dramatically improves survival recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas EMS personnel also care for the community by teaching injury prevention to citizens to lessen the occurrence of severity of the injuries. Whereas appropriate to recognize the value and the comfort for the emergency medical service providers who save countless lives. Now therefore, I have it hold by the virtue of thirty vested in me as Mayor of the City of Odessa, Texas, due here proclaiming May twenty-sixth, uh, May sixteenth to the twenty-second, the year twenty twenty-one, as National EMS Week. So throughout the city, I encourage citizens to recognize these outstanding men and women dedicated to pre-hospital medical care for all of our citizens here in Odessa, Texas. Round of applause for the gentleman. Thank you, Mayor. Council, uh, mentioned next week is EMS Week, the sixteen through the twenty-first. Actually, it was President Ford that came up with this recognition for the nation to recognize our EMS practitioners. Uh, he passed it back in nineteen seventy-four. So this is our actual, our forty-sixth annual, uh, National EMS Week. The theme for this, this year's EMS Week is, this is EMS caring for our communities. You know, the pandemic brought, you know, the EMS profession much deserved attention from the public and the media. Uh, and they recognize the important roles that paramedics and E M Ts play here in response to the coronavirus. Uh, in addition to caring for the sickest COVID-nineteen patients, you know, we've seen our EMS staff and helped staff COVID vaccinations and testing, you know. I'll bring up Chief White, he was in charge of the, uh, the COVID task force that was doing all the testing when this first kicked off. Um, I know on the mobile testing, they did five thousand patients that they, uh, tested. And then the, the state, uh, through the Texas Division of Emergency Management tasked us to, uh, go out and test the nursing homes. And that's what we did. We went out, or the task force went out under the direction of Chief White. And they vaccinated seven nursing homes in City Odessa. And then on top of that, they, uh, they were called and see if they would, we would be willing to go to Crane and test, test that nursing home. And they did, and they went to Monahan as well. So they did a tremendous job on that, on the very first start of, of the testing. The other half of that was the administration of vaccination. Chief Huber back here, uh, he was in command for that task force. Uh, he was in command for the, for the stakeholders that, that came together, you know, whether it was the hospitals, uh, you know, the school district, our, you know, police officers, everybody that was involved. Our city manager, our assistant city manager, Phil Backter was also playing a very, uh, vital role in this. But anyways, at the end of the day, they were able to vaccinate thirty-three thousand plus patients in this community and other communities as well. So, um, we just wanna highlight the diversity of our EMS in many unique ways that our personnel, the leaders and the educators, um, that they provide, uh, to this, not only to our community, community, but across the country. And they do this not just on the pandemic, but they do it every, every day of the year. Um, I read this excerpt, expert, excerpt rather, from, uh, the GEMS. It's the Journal of Emergency Medical Services. And it's got, one, two, three, four, four points that I would like to read. It says, "It's the department that steps up to run testing in vaccination clinics when no one else can. It is the E M T who holds the child's hand on the way to the hospital to make sure he isn't scared. It's the crew that spends an hour fighting for cardiac arrest victims' life at the end of a long sleepless night. It is the emergency medical profession, professionals who care for our communities day in and day out." And so with that, I would like to add my own twist to this is that "In the face of a never-ending storm, whatever storm that might bring, I can assure you that your men and women of this department never back down." This is EMS. Thank you.
Okay, so let's get started with the boring stuff here now. Any member of the public may address the City Council regarding any of its agenda items before, during, or considering a consideration of said item. Uh, the council overlooked, I'm sure you've overlooked your considered agenda. Take a look at it, and then I'll entertain the motion.
Mr. Mayor, what?
I have a motion by Councilman Sprouse, second. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Thompson, all in favor, indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Okay, we're gonna move on to other, uh, other council actions. Consider a bid award for erosion control project in Memorial Gardens. Mr. Penn.
The erosion control award bid would be for, um, the two bids that were received, one was by Hawkins Construction for one hundred and nine thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars. The other one's from Honest Contractors at one hundred and five thousand. This is after a redesign. And now that we have rain at the same time that we're gonna bid this, we should bid this thing often so that we'll get more rain. Can't believe it. We went for months, complete access to that entire area, completely barren. And then we got to bid this thing out, and now we get all this rain. But I'm not complaining, that's okay. We need it real bad. Uh, we do have funds available for this, uh, and this is within a more, uh, um, in line with the budget. We did a redesign. If you remember, this is the second time that we have bid this out. We rejected the first one, it was way out of line as far as the scope of the project. And I redesigned it, we got it back in scope, got it back in budget, and this is all we need to protect the erosion control. Any questions?
Council, any questions or comments? Entertain the motion. I have a motion by Councilman Mata, second, by Councilwoman Swannar. All those in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Uh, next item is a public hearing. Open a public hearing to consider approval of the request by E and E Environmental Experts Incorporated owner L C A agent for the original zoning lot industrial of blocks nine through eleven, block one, West Interstate Industrial Site four dash, uh, three dash forty-nine, City of Odessa, Texas.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, the City of Odessa had four notices relating to this case. Uh, we did not have any notices returned. We did not receive any protests, and we did receive one written proof related to this request. Uh, the property involved is located, uh, northeast of the intersection of Walther Road and I twenty. Site is currently designated future development. It is occupied by industrial use, uh, uh, buildings. Uh, land use in the general area does consist of industrial-related development and vacant land. Now, but in this case is E and E Environmental Experts that do own the property. L C A is acting as the agent in this request. And the purpose of the original zoning lot industrial would facilitate future development of industrial use buildings on this property. Uh, this request is not in conflict with the City of Odessa's comprehensive master plan. Uh, it would be a complement to existing industrial uses or industrial zoning zone adjacent properties in this area. And, um, the request would assign a zoning to a property that was annexed into the city within the last, oh, about a year, year and a half. It would afford the property owner flexibility and future development of this property. And the planning and zoning commission did give unanimous approval of this request, and planning staff thus conferred with this recommendation for approval of, uh, of original zoning of lot industrial. And we have to answer any questions.
Council, does anyone have any questions or comments? This is a public hearing, I'll open it up to anyone wishing to comment on this item. Do so by coming forward, stating your name and address for the record. Seeing that no one's coming forward, I'll close the opening, uh, the, the open hearing. Uh, entertain the motion. I have a motion by Councilwoman Willis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman White. All in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, we're gonna go on to Mr. Lane's items. I don't have anything on, uh, I think about COVID-nineteen. Does anybody have anything to add? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to, uh, public boards. Uh, City Secretary DeMont.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Up for appointment is the Colorado River Municipal Water District. Gary Hayner and Jimmy Goats are willing to serve again. And Council did receive on Friday the interested applications for those that were also interested in serving on this board.
Does anybody have any comments or questions? Or do we wanna go through them all? Go ahead, go, go ahead.
That's the only one.
Oh, that's the only one, okay. Uh, so does the council have any comments or discussions?
Well, the only comment I'll make is with everything going on with Nacerro and the fact I think that they're interviewing for another, uh, director, I believe, at the C R M W D, I think it'd be, uh, prudent to continue to have Gary and, and Dr. Goats on that, on that board. Uh, they're going through a lot of stuff right now, and I think the continuity is probably, you know, very much in order. So I'd make a motion, we accept, or reappoint them for another two-year period.
I'll say.
I have a motion by Councilman Thompson, second by Councilman Willis. All those in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Uh, we're gonna move on to, um, I wanna have, before we go into reset the executive session, um, do we, uh, I wanna see about discussing the item B. If we wanna be able to table this item, consultation with the attorney. Uh, we haven't heard back from parties. Uh, does the council have any discussion, uh, in your, in our position to that? Is that correct? Can we, can I, can we do, can we table that out?
I move, we can table that, uh, item B, six B of this agenda.
I second it.
Do I need to read, do I need to read it out?
No, you don't need to read it, we're tabled.
Okay. So, uh, I have a motion by Councilman Sprouse, second by Councilman Thompson to put the item B, uh, on the table, on, in. All those in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, item is tabled. Now, we'll consider a motion to reset the executive session to consider the evaluation of applicants for the position of Associate Municipal Court Judge, including possible appointment of a new Associate Municipal Court Judge as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one point zero-seven-four, and to consult with the attorneys on personal matters. The council manager to the executive session, do I have a motion?
I move.
I have a motion by Councilman Sprouse, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Councilman Swannar. All those in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we are in executive session.
We've been, that's one of our, we're not possible to advance. We've locked up, I'm not wanting to take you down.